Okay, now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It is ten oh two AM, Wednesday, February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. This is a special meeting, which will also, during the later this morning recess, and we will come back for a continued, uh, meeting on a separate land use appeal issue.
At two thirty, right?
At two thirty, correct. Commissioner Gold had some surgery yesterday and has been, basically, is calling in to participate. Been requested that I chair the meeting. So, I'm Commissioner Huxley. To my right is Commissioner Boyce. Again, Commissioner Gold is calling in. To Commissioner Boyce's right is County Council Huddle and to his right is John Jesuit on County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Acting Chair. Uh, this is a question for Commissioner Gold. Commissioner Gold, you had some surgery yesterday. You're under sedation. Is there any effects of that sedation or surgery that would affect your ability to consider the matters presented to the Board of Commissioners today?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you, just wanted to make that for the record. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have on item, Agenda Item Two, we have adoption approval of the Agenda Items. Do you have any changes, Commissioner Boyce?
No, I just wanted to hear from, uh, Facilities Maintenance Director Hanson and Parks Director, uh, Tros. So, assume that we're going to have, give them a few minutes still? Even though it's under the consent calendar?
Correct, I'm going to request that it be pulled for discussion out of the consent calendar.
Great.
Both those items, okay? Are you okay with that, Commissioner Gold?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, do we, any other?
No, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the Agenda as amended, County Council?
Question, would you want to do the presentation before those items then? The presentation from our visitor, the Naseekah Beach? It's just a question.
If that would, uh, if you'd be amenable to that, I would have no question of no issues?
Yes, I think that's a, I think that's the best route.
Do we want to then have a motion to move that item? Or I would?
Maybe I misunderstood. Uh, Mr. Tros and Mr. Hanson would go before, next.
Yeah, I understood you.
I was thinking the other way around, that we do the guest presentation before, but again, it's just a, it's just a question.
And then they can stay.
Well, right, but the question would be, how much time do you anticipate taking on the next, on those elevator and ADA things?
So, I think the sequence we have would be best.
Yeah.
Which would be, uh, Mr. Hanson first.
So, we want to leave it in the order that it is?
Yes, I do.
It's up to the Board, I'm just asking the question, just.
Okay.
I won't hold it against you.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion to approve as amended?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yes.
You second that, Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's just bear with me here. Okay, then, we're going to stay with the same sequence, except that Items Three A and B are not going to be in the consent calendar. We've moved those out. So, it would be what was consent calendar, Item Three A, Elevator Contractor, Eric Hanson?
Good morning, my name's Eric Hanson, I'm the Facilities Director for the county. I'm here to answer any questions.
Commissioner Boyce, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm just thankful we had three different companies that were willing to bid on this. And it looks like you did a really good job on trying to get the right attention and, uh, I know there's a little bit of urgency here. Do I have that correct?
Yeah, no, you're correct, I'm just, I'm waiting till you're done, just to make sure I don't get forgotten in my question.
Um, let me, if I may, let me ask Commissioner Gold next, and then we'll come to County Council. Commissioner Gold, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I knew there were three bids, is that correct? And, um, I'm just looking to save the county some money here, so if the lowest bid is something that we could live with, I'm all for that.
Okay, any other comments, Commissioner Gold?
No.
Okay, County Council?
Thanks, um, so, this was worked up by staff, Eric Hanson, John Hitten, myself. And what my role was to prepare the contract, um, and it's our county standard form contract. And I did prepare that, mm, in a degree of haste, so, and I'm the one who put it on the consent Agenda, so that's all, um, probably on my shoulders for that. With respect to Eric, I don't know that Eric's had a chance to look, and I think the contract I wrote up, and it's our standard form contract, which basically includes some mandatory legal terms, and then we attach the, you know, successful, proposed, successful contractor as Exhibit A to describe the scope of work. And Eric, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that or not, but, um, one of the things that I put in there, and what I wrote it up as was for the Tyson Krupp with the, what they call their ninja mode, which is an extra seventy-five-hundred, more or less, to their, um, other, other bid. And so, the total is seventy-three, one thirty-seven. But our standard form contracts also have completion dates on them, and when I read that ninja mode, I focused right on the ninja mode part that says, "This will be done in five days," or, I can't remember. So, in my contract, I said, "The contract shall commence upon execution and terminate when work is complete." The work shall be completed within five days of contract execution. And afterwards, I took a closer look at all three of the contracts, and I'm not so sure that the work starts right when we execute, meaning when the Board, you know, signs this thing. It looks like on all of them, there's a, there's an amount of time that's going to be taken to mobilize, demobilize, order parts, receive parts. Can you, can you talk to whether, on the draft contract I put together, that needs some, some work there?
Five days, I believe, even with two crews working, two tens, that's twenty hours a day. Five days is going to be a stretch due to our location. Then, I believe Tyson Krupp also asked for five weeks so that they could organize all their vendors and acquire parts and materials needed. Uh, the five days, I imagine, would be, uh, if you were in a metropolitan area, I would recommend that we give them twice that.
Well, the, the thing about it is, that's in their materi, they're the ones who put that down as far as quote-unquote ninja mode and?
Yes, exactly, that was, that's their numbers. However, when we're working in a jail, that adds quite a bit of time. I usually double the amount of time estimated due to security. We have to run background checks on all of the techs and mechanics, et cetera, and, uh, transportation issues. I, normally, I double the expected work time, and I think that would be reasonable in this situation. The, uh, even if it was ten days, that's a lot better than the six to eight weeks the other contractors offered.
Okay, um, well, anyway, so it sounds like there's some, maybe some additional work to be done on the terms, that being one of them. But that's really the one question I wanted to focus on. I know there's other questions. When you look at all three different bids, they were all slightly different as well. Do you want to maybe describe in general, perhaps, some of the, some of the differences between Tyson Krupp, Otis, and Straight Up that just are easy to explain off the top of your head? If you dig into the contracts, there's more detail.
On this project, I stressed the apples to apples. All of these bidders were, uh, proposed the same amount of work. The exact same specs on the equipment and the security issues. So, they all were, um, aligned as far as work to be performed.
Did Otis include replacement of a, of the jack or the cylinders? There's something that seemed like Otis was going to do? The others, the Tyson Krupp and the, and, pardon me, Mr. Chair, is this okay to have a follow-up?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It seemed like on Tyson Krupp and, um, Straight Up, they talked about repacking the cylinder, and I couldn't tell, but I, again, I'm not a technician, but did Otis call for replacement or doing something?
They all originally
Okay.
requested the replacement of the jack. However, there's only one outfit in the state, um, that is certified to do that work. It takes a miniature drill rig and hazardous material, equipment, to remove it, along with a, uh, large vacuum truck that you see clearing the sewers. We'd have to run those in. So, I separated that project to each of the bidders, and I got quotes on that as a follow-up, and they all agreed to that.
Okay, I just, I, you know, I'm looking, I just couldn't tell if, if they were talking about, if the Otis one was talking about replacing the, the jack or?
I was able to negotiate with Otis, and they, um, acquiesced to the fact that we wouldn't, would not be able to do all of those projects at the same. However, their bid was still substantially higher.
Okay.
And they, uh, presented that option at a late date, like yesterday.
Oh, so, do we have their, is that a revision to the, what do we have? What, originally, we have them at, um, at, uh, I thought it was close to a hundred thousand dollars?
Anyone?
Did they, did they submit something then less than the ninety-one, or is?
They never submitted any order.
Okay, but did the ninety-one they submitted include that jack that just yesterday they changed?
Yes.
Okay, so, right, and that's the one that the other two didn't include? So, somehow, they would be somewhere less than ninety-one?
They all originally included it, and I was able to negotiate, separate those two projects.
Okay.
Uh, and Otis was not, um, they were the most reluctant.
Mm-hmm.
And their bid would still be higher.
Okay, all right, well, those are just the questions I had. Those were some of the big picture, I think, differences that I saw between Tyson Krupp. There's a few others, uh, but again, I'll, I'll let the Commissioners, uh, talk about the contracts.
Commissioner Boyce, you had?
I do have a couple of questions first, I just want the public that might be listening in to make sure that they understand, uh, this is the elevator in our jail, so it's quite, quite important and transports prisoners, et cetera.
Yes, it's the only method they have for transporting, uh, secure personnel and inmates to the courthouse.
Thank you, a couple of questions. Uh, Straight Up and Tyson Krupp, are they from Oregon, or what is their location?
Straight Up is the only locally owned, they're from Coos Bay. The other two are international.
Okay, uh, is there anything that gives you, with a fifty-four thousand dollar bid, uh, on the Straight Up company from Coos Bay? Anything that gives you apprehension now that, uh, they wouldn't be able to do the job? Or, I appreciate your recommendation on Tyson Krupp, but, um, yeah, nineteen thousand dollars, them being close, uh, it's kind of a roll of the dice here to see which would be the best company?
Straight Up, I talked with them yesterday, we spoke at length. They would be totally capable of performing this, however, the timeframe, we, when they begin work, that elevator would not be functioning. We'll have a huge, uh, protocol change at the Sheriff's Office for transportation problems. So, we have to take in perspective the amount of time down for that elevator as compared to cost. We could be talking, uh, personal safety issues here. Straight Up does not offer a ninja component. They don't have the personnel.
And they understand what you're up against here, I'm sure.
Yes, they do, yes.
That's all I have for now.
County Council, did you have any other before I comment?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, I just, um, had some kind of general overview questions like that. I know each contract is multiple pages with a lot of different, a lot of language in them, but, uh, again, I'll, I'll wait to answer questions.
Okay. Um, I'll, I'll make some comments then. I spoke, I called and spoke with County Council yesterday on what I saw. I raised the issue of the five days. I've raised the issue also of, if they do not do that, is there a penalty? You know, and typically, it's not unusual at all for premium costs for doing something like that. If you have a bonus per se, that you also have a penalty if you don't do what you said you would do. That would absolutely, I would require personally that that be included in any contract, especially if we're, call it whatever mode we want. If there's a penal, if there's a premium for, uh, a claim to completion to date, that if it's not met, there would be a penalty also. Oh, there should be, certainly, and I've done enough contracts where we had just that. Rewards for doing what you said you were going to do within a timeframe, and penalties for not doing what you said you would do. The, uh, the current elevator is a hydraulic elevator. It is an Otis hydraulic elevator.
It is a US hydraulic elevator, which was purchased, bought out by the Tyson Krupp Company.
Okay, but originally, was it not an Otis?
No.
Okay, well, it's shown there in the contract, it's shown as an Otis elevator in the orig, in the maintenance contract that, that the county has with Tyson Krupp.
On the top of the page, it says Otis Courthouse, and then
Yes.
over the years, on the bottom of that page, it will say US Hydraulic Elevator Jail.
I'm sorry?
On the bottom of that contract, it says US Elevator.
Okay, well, okay, on the, on the top, it says Otis, so?
It does.
Okay, so there's, clearly, there's a manufacturer, it, you know, discrepancy there.
If I, if I could, are you both referring to, I'll call it a nineteen ninety-five or earlier agreement?
That's the one that we finally determined in searching, but that was the, the one that was in a, in force and the one that was, began negotiation for, uh, to renegotiate in two thousand sixteen, and it never came to fruition.
And, and, yeah, so, right, and that was even not with Tyson Krupp? That was with a different company that they bought, or something like that?
Correct, yeah, correct.
Okay, but I just wanted to make sure for Commissioner Gold and Commissioner Boyce, both Commissioner Huxley and Eric Hanson are talking about a contract that's not in our package right now and that you haven't seen, so?
But that, to the best of everybody's knowledge, after I, again, had sent a correspondence to County Council and Interim Administrator Hitt on January twenty-eighth to respond to the emails that Administrator Hitt, or Interim Administrator Hitt had addressed on the crucial time, um, and in that was, some, were some questions for Administrator Hitt. Some have been answered, some haven't, uh, and, uh, a recommended source of revenue, which hasn't been discussed in any of this. And I also talked with County Council on that document yesterday also. Warranty was another one, and, again, I didn't have time to thoroughly go through these three proposals that, that are here, uh, in this packet, but the, the warranty, uh, for, at least on the documents that are in, in the, the packet here this morning, the warranty for Tyson Krupp was one year. It was, or two years, under other circumstances, but it would be, the warranty would be the lesser of time of the two. And the warranty was some clarification from Otis on the main hydraulic portion, which is, you know, they were emphasizing is the critical, or one that certainly have the critical portion. If that fails, there could be a catastrophic, uh, accident. Uh, was twenty years if, and it made sense, if they were the one to have the continued maintenance agreement with the county to perform services, there was a twenty-year warranty. So, we need to not just say that, I think, perhaps too much, looking at some of the other, parts of those agreements, uh, we don't want to place too much weight just on how quick can you get it done? Is, if you can get it done quickly, and there's an issue eighteen months later, and it's going to cost another ten, twenty, thirty, you know, and, and for a major failure, then maybe the, the time, uh, wasn't as important as a warranty from a, certainly, it will, we'll say they're all reputable companies, but I'm not convinced.
So, Mr. Chair, do you have a, a recommendation that you're leaning towards?
I, I, I have, my recommendation, Commissioner Boyce, is that we take another week to come back to have more thoroughly reviewed this and ask, uh, Eric Hanson individually, you know, additional questions. I think we need to, to, before just jumping into this, I think we need, I think we'd be very prudent to take another week, review what we have, ask more questions, perhaps go back to the, to the potential, uh, bidders with some more questions before we make a, what I think will be a slightly too quick decision today, based on what we've, what we've seen now in this package.
Well, that's your decision, I would like to bring up the fact that the elevator is working now. Sometimes it takes two deputies to operate it, um, and it is at the risk of failure within the next week.
As, as you addressed, you know, in your, your previous emails, correct. Did you have a comment?
Oh, just, uh, you just answered the question I was going to pose to you. Uh, but in addition, do you, uh, is that risk too great, uh, by waiting a week? And I would also just defer to Commissioner Gold on that, and see if she has any reluctance there.
Well, I, I think that, um, we need to look at all aspects, because this is a pretty big chunk of money. I know that it needs to be done quickly, but I think at the, uh, risk of doing it quickly, we're going to end up with a nest on our hands sooner than later if we don't look at it more closely. So, I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Huxley on this one.
Uh, County Council?
Thank you, so, um, continuing it for a week, I think was discussed, we don't have a motion, we're just talking about it.
Correct.
What, and you say to look more closely, um, are there, you know, are there issues in, in each contract? What, what, what would you like us to focus on in that look? Or, I imagine I would be working closely with Eric Hanson on any more close examination of the bids and the quotes. I, I know you earlier said, if we're going to pay a premium for, uh, quick work, do we get a, charge a penalty for if they don't meet that deadline? That seems one thing to look at. Are there other areas of the three contracts you'd like us to examine? You mentioned warranty as well. Any others, um, that you would like us to, uh, look at? But ultimately, I think the Board will have to compare similar but different terms and make a decision based partly on money, but a warranty is sort of like money, sort of not. And then the timing penalty issue, um, certainly is money, but, um, it's, you know, a speculative thing if it's a condition of, you know, a condition subsequent if it doesn't occur. So, um, anyway, any other issues specifically that you would like us to look at to compare the three bids?
Yes, there are.
Oh, thanks, Eric.
Um, Otis has superior equipment. Of course, you get what you pay for. Their warranty is better. They're a little bit farther down as far as when they can begin work. I have not closed any negotiations with any of these contractors. Otis has a new system of door openers that they would put in the jail car that opens and closes doors. This, um, let me put it, um, in perspective. We have an Otis elevator in the courthouse that has not hiccuped since nineteen fifty-six.
So, so we have two elevators, and that's why one elevator could easily be identified as Otis and another not?
Correct, that was the misinterpretation. And the jail elevator was added to that contract, so it's on the separate page.
I'd presume, though, that the one in the courthouse gets used about ten percent for what the one in the jail gets used.
I'd say they're about the same.
Really?
Yes, yes.
So, the, okay, you would know.
Otis has superior.
I just don't want to spend any, I, I don't see a justified delay. I, I would, the risk just doesn't, to require staff to do more work, the risk just doesn't give me enough warning signs to suggest we need to, uh, delay this any further.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, County Council?
Well, again, um, one of the things I just want to really make sure, at least the Board is on the same page with, and it is what's presented, because on Page Nine of the materials, and what I liked about Tyson Krupp was they are certainly, they provided, you know, the most background documentation on the project. On Page Nine is an email where, um, it looks like Matt Olson of Tyson Krupp outlines, actually, three options, uh, even. One, and he calls it the riskiest and the cheapest, is just to replace this switcher board, uh, which isn't working, but, um, you know, the, and then he says, the second is the most expensive, is a modernization, um, and from what I could tell, it's basically, you know, uh, I, I'll just make a comparison, like rebuilding a carburetor. They're basically going to rebuild the, the car and the doors and stuff in this, and then maybe a power unit, but it looks like, you know, when I looked at these bids, it was, it seemed to include like the walls and the door motors, and it's like we're getting a new car to go in the elevator with some of the ancillary pieces, you know, the switchboard buttons and mechanics and electronics and stuff. Is that, and that's, it certainly sounds like staff is recommending that we not take the six or eight thousand dollar option, which is the riskiest and cheapest, and that we go with a, um, a complete rebuild of the, of the cab or the elevator car. I mean, and that, that makes sense to me from the risk management standpoint, that this car has become obsolete, and if you go with this cheapest option in the short run, it's six or eight thousand today, you know, it'll be six or eight thousand, next year, six or eight thousand, the year after that, because little pieces of it will fall apart. And that's just a layperson's take on this.
Something else you might consider is, for a service call, it's six thousand dollars.
Meaning, if we, not just this repairs are six thousand dollars, but every time we call them out, if it has hiccups or breakdowns or whatever, even to get, even to get an understanding of what's wrong, it's, it's roughly six thousand dollar service call under our contract with Tyson Krupp?
Correct.
Okay, so, so that's why, even though it looks like we're spending on a rebuild when maybe we could do a piecemeal repair, that piecemeal repair probably isn't, um, cost-effective in the, in the long run, in the long-term ownership of the, it's probably the least-cost maintenance, so? Anyway, those are, just, just, uh, just talking about that, and all those, that, that discussion is informed by what's on Page Nine of your, of your materials, in an email from Mr. Olson.
I think that, County Council, you're referring back to an earlier email from Tyson Krupp.
January, January twenty-third.
This was right after the issue, way before additional proposals, and they went so far in that, I can't cite it, you know, verbatim, but their comment was, yes, this would, this would be our least, but if you spent this money, there'd be no guarantee that it would even work. And if it didn't, basically, effectively, you're still out that money. So, I thought that was a?
Yep, no, well, he was, like I said, it just shows that we've analyzed, you know, all the options, and the option of the rebuild is what we're presenting.
To your question, you know, do we have any other, you know, things that we would like to bring up or discuss, you know, if we postpone this meeting or, you know, continue it till next week? I think I opened saying that I hadn't thoroughly read, and I don't, I can't believe anybody else has either, thoroughly read the three proposals. I would want to do that and then get back in the next couple of days with addition. want to do that and then get back in the next couple of days with additional questions. And I think lastly, what, what Eric Hanson said, well, perhaps 10 minutes ago, you know, when comparing the, the, the companies, said, and again, I won't put, I'll paraphrase, but I'm not putting words in your, in your mouth, that the superior equipment is the Otis elevator.
It is. Another aspect of this project is if we go with a different vendor besides Tyson Krupp, we have the opportunity at that point to break their maintenance contract.
Which you have hoped for, for years, I think, you know, again, not to, to put words in your mouth, but that's the, the message that I've received from you, yes, for a lot of valid, certainly financial reasons.
Yes. Their, Otis's contract, service calls are half the price, straight up. They're from Coos Bay. Their service contract, maintenance service contracts, what I'm referring to, are also least expensive.
I, I'm not, I would have to analyze that part of it. I think we're talking about two different things. We're talking about annual maintenance contract, we're talking about this, which is not that. This is a rebuild of a piece of equipment that's failing way beyond maintenance, and I'm not sure that doing this with a different company would allow us an opportunity to get out of that contract, which I think we're in till 2021. I don't want that to be part of the board's decision here.
No, I agree.
So I'm just not sure how they'd fit together. But I, I do know, my analysis is that this is not subject to that, so we're not locked in to Tyson Krupp, which was why we were able to go out and get three bids.
I, I don't, anyway, I think that, I wasn't sure what Eric meant by that. I would ask for a motion to...
I'm going to offer a motion, Mr. Chair, and order authorize a contract to modernize the elevator serving the Creighton County Jail and through the Straight Up Elevator Company.
Through the Tyson?
Straight up, he said.
No, he said, straight up. Do we have a second?
Straight up.
Commissioner Gold?
Well, how much was that bid versus the others? I don't have all the information in front of me because I don't have a county computer.
$54,000.
$54,000?
And they're local.
They were the low bid.
That's correct.
That was the low bid, and, and were there any guarantees or anything like that with it?
They're, they're all three very reputable companies from all the, all the research that staff has done.
Okay, but what about the warranty on the work? How long does that, how long is that? Because I'm concerned about that. I mean, if it just starts falling apart right after we get it done, then, then there's a problem.
Well, we just talked about the risk of that happening. It's, I think we're okay there. It'd be, I'm, I'm going to let, or ask Director Hanson to offer again, if he thinks the risk is so great that we should not accept this local company and save the $19,000.
Straight Up has a 12-month guarantee. That's found on page 26 of the materials.
Okay, and the other guarantees are what?
I think Tyson Krupp was also a year, and then Otis was longer.
Okay.
Was Otis two years or?
Expensive, right?
Correct.
Okay, Director Hanson, what did you recommend?
I recommended the Tyson Krupp just because of the time element, and they are the original equipment manufacturer. However, all three of these companies would be capable. Tyson Krupp would be the quickest with less downtime. That was my category as...
And so your reason for Tyson Krupp was because they could get it done quicker?
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So do I need to repeat my motion?
No, you wanted Straight Up, which was the $54,000?
That's correct, Commissioner Gold.
Okay, I'll second that.
And any further comments?
No.
My comments would be the same. I think it would be behoove us, I think it would be irresponsible not to take an extra week and have further discussions one-on-one because I think this would be, we're not comparing apples to apples. So that's my, my position.
If, if I may, I think irresponsible, thank you. I think irresponsible, pretty strong term. We spent time on this. We have staff that has spent a very wise amount of time in this, and I think our questions have been answered, and I think we need to set this in motion. And so I don't think that's irresponsible. I'm going to say a third time that the risk doesn't justify another week delay, because we could also have something unexpected compound the problem here. That's all. Thank you.
My, my comments are, would, would remain. I think we're going down the wrong path for the wrong reasons. We need to take a breath and read the contracts, which clearly I don't think has been the case.
Well, my first choice was Straight Up Elevator. I can see that entirely happening. They have a great service and backup organization on the coast here.
Thank you.
But that wasn't your recommendation now, that you came in with?
Well, I have to deal with the jail command staff.
Understood. I'm just saying.
So I reached for a middle ground here.
Mr. Hanson, I appreciate the extensive work you've done on this, and I know you're quite familiar with that, that aged elevator. So gratitude to you.
So any further discussion?
No.
On, and the motion has been for, would you just, with the...
Thank you.
John Jezza, would you, would you repeat the motion, please?
Motion by Commissioner...
Motion by Commissioner Boyce to approve the low bid Straight Up.
So call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
No? Okay. County, County Council?
Thanks. I had a question for Commissioner Gold. Commissioner Gold, you mentioned that you don't have a county computer, but do you have internet access where you are that you could get our materials for the packet as they are on the website?
Uh, no.
Have?
So I'm just listening really hard today.
You have, you've seen the, but you seem familiar with the material.
I went through the page, yes.
Okay.
We'll cover for you.
Well, it's important that you have, you know, the information, at least have, you know, reviewed it as much on the elevator and these matters, and also in particular on the matter at 2:30. When we...
Well, I saw all of that.
Good.
The 2:31, and I've been reading over that today.
Thank you. I, because when we did talk, and you, you were familiar with it. So somehow, even though you don't have the internet access and the, and the packet...
Not for the county stuff, but I did get, you did send me on my personal email this stuff for 2:30 today.
Very good. Okay. I just want to make sure that you have access to the materials when, when making those decisions.
Yeah, I printed it out.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Okay. It's, thank you, Eric. The next item is item, what was item, still is 3B, but out of consent calendar, and that was the ADA restroom project at Boy's Cove Park.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Thank you to the board for hearing this matter today. So as you guys, as you know, a little background, the Parks Department applied for a grant through the US State Park, or through the Oregon State Parks, and was awarded the grant to do an ADA restroom revamp at Boy's Cove. Total grant project is $150,000 with a 25% county match. We've held the, the county match this, for a year, just over a year and a half now in our budget. So it's been, it's been there, ready to go. The hangup has been finding a contractor who, number one, had time, and number two, would be willing to travel. And that was pretty, that was a pretty intense process. We, we searched out a lot of different contractors, and most of us, most of them, well, all of them except for one, gave us the same answers. They didn't have time, they were booked out somewhat, some 18 months in advance, and others wouldn't, would not be willing to incur the cost of traveling to Boy's Cove. We, we did everything in our power to make sure that we kept this project local. We wanted to ensure that, you know, the money that was brought in for this project stayed within this county with the, with our current contractors. And lo and behold, Kessler Contractors called us back, came out, did a great bid. We worked with a few different agencies to really try to reduce costs on different aspects of it. We were able to coordinate with the, the Oregon State Parks on a design concept that they currently use at Humbug that we were really interested in. So they provided us their information for free, their architectural designs and things of that nature. So that was a really good resource. We, we, identifying subcontractors for our, our contractor, identifying subcontractors was, again, a bit of a difficulty, but he was able to, to secure some contractors, subcontractors who also worked on that Humbug, Humbug project. So they're very familiar with the project that we're looking to put in at Boy's Cove. Their current bid comes in at budget. Initially, it, it was a little over, so we decided, you know, we had to go back and look what we could value engineer. The greatest cost savings that we could value engineer into the project was, was time. The opportunity, the time that it cost his employees to drive from Brookings to Boy's Cove every day would basically reduce efficiency in the project. So it was agreed upon that we would provide RV parking spaces for all of the employees, or for his construction crew, to bring their trailers up and stay on-site for the project so that they're maximizing their efficiency, not on the road, but at the project. And that was in, just by doing that, we were able to reduce costs to get it down into budget. I thought it was a pretty, I thought it was a pretty creative way to make this work on both their end and ours, by utilizing the resources that we currently offer to get this project done in a timely fashion. Time is of the essence, that, you know, getting this bid project put together has taken quite a bit of time. We've been working with Kessler on this for about five months, on just putting this bid together, getting the designs, identifying exactly what it is we're looking for to build, and down to the details. And we were very excited to see that, that this project could be done in, within budget, and most likely before the shoulder season starts, which is when we start to receive our, majority of our guests. So with that, I, I did pass the bid on to our county administrator for his review prior to this, to see if there was anything that he would like to have added before sending it back to Kessler Construction, and he felt that the bid was suitable. However, due to the fact that we didn't have three bids, wanted to make sure that we brought it before the board for final decisions.
Commissioner Boyce, you have any comments?
Well, just thanks for keeping it local, and it looks like you are going to make the shoulder season, and great project. The, the grant you received was no small accomplishment.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gold, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, just one question. I know there's two Kessler building outfits. There's the son and there's the father. Which one did you get?
This is Lance, the son.
Oh, Lance. Okay. Actually, I've worked with him before, and I was very happy with what he did.
Yes, I, I actually, and I, the first home I owned in Brookings was a Kessler home, and it was a very, very well-built home. They have a great reputation in that, in that area.
County Council?
No, I would be comfortable working with him.
Any other comments, Commissioner Gold?
No.
Commissioner, County Council, you have any from a legal or perspective?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Very similar to the elevator contracts, and the one that was in your packet was written with Tyson Krupp, and it had the five-day timeline for delivery. We'll need to have this contract be subject to our standard county contract terms. The bids and documents from Kessler would be Exhibit A. It would require, you know, the insurance, the compliance with the statutory laws, those type of things, which are actually requirements of a grant. Any grant we have, we have to follow both federal and state contracting laws. So that document, I did not prepare it and put it in here, but that will be part of this contract.
What about complete, I guess for Director Tros, what about completion date on this?
Well, so the completion date's going to be subject to when we can get this bid approved, because he was obviously concerned that if we had to postpone it, he'd have to postpone the permitting process. But he, the, the point, we're looking to do this, like I said, before shoulder season starts, which would be construction being completed before May. That's our, that's, that's our end goal.
It was approved today or tomorrow.
And he could start the permitting process and get that...
He could expect this to be completed by...
May.
The end of May?
No, I, well, we're shooting for the beginning of May, because that's the beginning of our shoulder season.
We could put that in the contract also, County Council, or something to that effect?
We could. I, I, you know, I, I think we can, we can put that in there, beginning of May. I think by Memorial Day would make sense.
Sure.
Just something so everybody has a...
An expectation and a date, but Memorial Day's a, a big, that's when you really need it, in my opinion. I mean, you know...
That's summer kickoff.
Yeah, so that's, that's like the big...
Yes.
That's the, the large demand. The, the shoulder is the kind of getting ready for that.
Trickle in.
Okay. So I think if we put a by Memorial Day, that, that's acceptable to the board and to the Parks Director.
Absolutely. And I, I would expect it to be done prior to that, obviously.
Sure.
If there's hiccups.
So do we have either Commissioner Gold or Commissioner, what, did you have another question, Commissioner?
So this is an action item?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Do we approve this proposal contract?
Well...
I will second that.
County Council?
Could I just propose a friendly amendment, that it be subject to the standard county and state law contracting terms with a delivery date before, by Memorial Day 2018?
Correct. Are we okay with that?
As amended, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move to Agenda Item 4 under Presentations, Naseka Beach Ofer Water District Ground Lease. And I'm assuming that you want to make your comments now before we have any discussion, which you are most willing to, but why don't you welcome your...
Yeah, I think that makes sense, if I may.
Yeah, you might just watch.
Carl King, Naseka Beach. I am here today speaking on behalf of the Naseka Beach Ofer Water District, a special district that services a community of about 500 homes and several businesses north of the city. We have one source of water, which is a wellhead along the Rogue River. While it's along the river, it does not draw water from the river, it draws from an aquifer under the river. And I, if I can, I, I can show you a plan.
Can we put that? Oh, there you go.
You're getting the hang of it.
You want a, want a little pointer?
Laser pointer.
It could work out there, right?
Yeah, it should.
I was told it would.
Oh, it won't?
Not on this way.
Okay.
I can stand up here and point on the drawing. The water district lot is this lot here, which is here, are pumped in our workshop or on, along the road. The wellhead is down here. Access to it is through the road that services the Canfield Bar for fishing. That roadway has two roads, they're not paved, of course, they're dirt, off of it that come down onto our property and around our well. One of them is on the lot owned by the county, and the other one is beyond it that is owned by the port. Our goal is to protect our well site. It is not uncommon to be down there and find an abandoned RV, abandoned. We don't know what's in its... what's in its holding tanks and we don't know what's in the vehicle and whether there are toxic materials in it. And we, we do have a concern because it is our only source of water for our 500 customers. We started talking with the county staff some time ago and knowing that there is an interest in that area for recreational purposes as well, the issue evolved primarily with my discussions with County Council Huddle, that all we really need is a lease of a portion of that lot and access rights. And so what we are proposing is that we lease from the access road to our wellsite and have the right then to put a gate or gates or fence along that. We have no interest in owning or having any responsibility for that road that goes down to the bar since that's used by the public for fishing and other purposes. We are a special district. Our customers pay for water. Our proposal to the county is that we lease that for 60 years at a dollar a year payable in advance. The entire area there is floodplain. There's really no other use one could have of that land other than for part-time recreational use. And to the extent there is recreational areas, they tend to be on this side. Other than the system of roads that come in there, it's pretty all heavy brush and there's no real sign, again, other than people abandoning RVs and other junk there. That way, we would be responsible for it. We could keep it clean. We could keep our wellsite protected. While if you go down there, our wellhead is about three to four feet above the ground in a concrete box. When the rogue floods, it floods higher than that in that area. And we have had occasions during the time period, I've been on the board for the last three or four years, where we've had to turn off our pump to protect our water supply so that we don't take in surface water that is not necessarily saline, but it, it may have contaminants in it. So that's, that's our suggestion. This is a, one of the lots that you identified in the past as being available. Again, we're, we're looking at only doing what we need to do to protect ourselves and our customers and to leave open for recreational purposes as much of that area as possible. Be more than happy to answer questions.
Commissioner Boyce, do you have any-
It just looks like as an attorney, you negotiated a really tough bargain here at one dollar a year. I think that's-
Well, payable, payable in advance.
Let me, I'll ask Commissioner Gold and then to County Council. Commissioner Gold, do you have any questions?
Well, the rate seems a little low, a buck a year. Is this normal?
Okay, let me defer to County Council.
It, it's not uncommon when government entities are leasing to government entities to offer a nominal amount, but it's not required. The state law allows us to transfer property interest to another government entity for zero. So it is more than zero. If I could, if, if I could ask Carl King to take this map away, which shows the area of the proposed lease in hash marks. If you look in this map, there's a large kinda check mark shape, which is our entire lot. And then what I'd like to do is just show the whole, the aerial photograph, if you could, by taking the, this exhibit off of there. When he mentioned, so if you look and the road is, is there, on the north side, you can see some fainter markings, look like roads and paths. I understand that's used by people who ride motorcycles, maybe bicycles. Informally, we have our Parks Director here as well. When this matter was first proposed to me by the Naseka Ofer Water District Management, they proposed just purchasing the entire lot. I think they had some money to help protect their wellhead in the form of a grant. And they had proposed, I think, twenty-some-odd thousand dollars for the entire lot. I think we looked at the assessed value and the entire lot was more than that. And so we talked about splitting the lot up and transferring them. Partitioning would have involved a lot of expense. If the board considers leasing them a sixty-year lease for a buck a year, I would say we might consider selling them the entire lot. The issue there is, and this is why when a proposal first came to me, I asked both the Sheriff Department, I think the Roads Department and the Parks Department if, if they had any plans for that check-shaped lot. And I think the answer was no, but that, I think there's an expectation from the public that that's available for use. The Parks Directors here, is there any formal relation between the county and the folks who ride bikes, dirt bikes, who, who use either the road? I think the port would expect that road to be open for them to access their lot. There could be some legal doctrine that, you know, we couldn't ever prevent them from, from accessing their lot as a way of necessity or something along those lines. But Jay, what can you tell us about the, the people who use that for recreation or?
So this was one of the, this was one of the plots of land that was in the original Land Use Task Force recommendation for county parks and it was put into that packet that was approved for parks. So what I would say is, there is no, as it stands right now, there's no formal contract with any entity, Mountain Bike Association, Motorcycle Association or any of that, for use of this area. So we wouldn't be infringing on any of that by moving forward with the Naseka Water District. The, the concerns that, that I would have, well, first off, this area would be very difficult to develop and, and maintain for reasons that Mr. King spoke about, having the flood, floodplanes every year. Putting something in there that would be permanent would be, you know, wouldn't be cost-effective. It just wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the right thing to do. We had looked at doing some mountain biking trails up in here to create some recreational opportunities, but the Mountain Biking Association felt that it would be too laborious to continue to do that year after year to rebuild over and over. So we're still searching out some opportunities, maybe some dry camping spots that we just have to clear off every year or something of that nature for the, for the people who do use this access area. But as you see here, there's two roads and these are really the risk areas. I would believe that the Naseka folks would say that these are the risk areas to their, to their water because that's where people can drive in, essentially abandoned vehicles. You have, you know, fluids that could get out of those vehicles, down into their aquifer and things of that nature. However, and gating this may be very difficult as well with annual floods that happen. So the one thing that I would ask is that the, the maintenance of that being partitioned off does not fall onto the county because that could be rebuilding a gate year after year after year after year. But outside of that, and, and I would believe, I think you guys have already got an agreement with the port for this access area to be gated off?
We've had discussion, preliminary discussions and every indication they would have no issue. Again, because they have to remove the vehicles that come down that road and they're abandoned on their property. So if we gate that road, that'll help them keep abandoned vehicles off their site.
And the, the lease contemplates fencing. It doesn't say gates. We could add that word gate, but it also does have the tenant responsible for, for those, for the improvements.
Yeah, and, and what we're thinking about, you know, currently, because with the floodplain issues, a fence may get knocked over every time the rogue floods. We would put a, a gate here and a gate there and, and obviously be responsible for maintaining them. We would be responsible for the area that we have been leased to maintain it. The draft lease provides for us providing $2 million of insurance. I understand we have that. So that, that's not an issue for us.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just looking at the drain there, despite periodic high water, you're not gonna have, I would be really surprised you had any serious current in there. I'd be a little more optimistic that your gates, once established, will be fine. They'll just have, be underwater every ten years or so. So this is something I think the county can do just to help a, a working district. And so, Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this lease for the, the Naseka Beach Ofer Water District.
Do you have a second?
And I like the idea that they are going to be responsible for maintaining, maintaining the area.
Any discussion, Commissioner Boyce, Commissioner Gold?
I think I've said it all.
I have a question for County Council and I, or for Carl either, or I don't know if you know the, you know, approximate amount. What was the, you, you approximate footage of these, the total lot or lots versus the, the amount that you want to lease?
Is 1.94 acres is the total lot.
Okay, what, what's the approximate size of, of what you actually want to lease?
I, I assume it's less, about a third or less than a third. It's more than a quarter, less than a third.
Yep, you're just, you're, you're basically looking at, at that and the whole check mark is, again, I, when we were looking at it, I thought, I just used the word two acres for the entire. And if you just take that and look at it, you can see it's, it is less than half, probably more than a quarter, close to a third. But I don't think we have surveyed the area to find the exact square footage. We're using a, a different way to describe the area other than that.
One, one of the advantages of a lease is you can have a sketch plan. It does not have to be a survey and have it recorded at the recording office, which is a real advantage here. The cost of, as Mr. Huddle suggests, the cost of dividing that and buying half of it, with all the approvals at the various levels, given its floodplain, given where it is, would just be a waste of money, frankly.
Not necessary.
And, and there's no, no question that the, the maintenance of anything put up, any fences, gates, whatever, is the responsibility of, of the Water District?
Oh, absolutely.
Any other comments? Call for the question?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carl.
Our 500 customers, thank you.
Okay, we're now going to go in to Item Five, which is an executive session. And there are three topics and I'm gonna read them off and cite the applicable statute. Five A is pursuant to ORS 192660 subsection two, subsection A, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Five B is Oregon Revised Statute 192660 subsection two, subsection F, to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. And C is the Revised Statute, Chapter 192 dot, dot 660 subsection two, subsection H, to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. So we'll ask anyone who is not associated with the press to please leave the meeting room while we do go into executive session. When we come back out, we will go back into the regular special meeting of County Council.
Mr. Chair, could you also do, add to the list of executive session topics? I couldn't recall if it was on there, but 192660 sub two, I think sub D is to talk to representatives for labor negotiations.
Okay, that was not-
I had a slight update on there. I have a slight update for the board on that.
Okay, so let, let's just add that as executive session. Five D, 192660 subsection-
Two, sub D.
Two, subsection D.
Labor negotiations.
Labor negotiations. Thank you. So we're going to get things changed here and about to go into executive session.
Bill, did you wanna speak today?
I couldn't hear you.
Were you wanting to speak today?
Briefly.
Well, yeah, we'd, our-
Okay, we're back, we're back on. It is, we're coming out of executive session. Oh, wait a minute, I told you. Okay. Excuse me, we're, we're, we're coming out of exec session. Let me know when you're ready, John. Are we, are we recording?
Yes, we are.
Okay, it's 11:33. We are coming out of executive session. No decisions were made while we were in executive session. We are back in the special meeting. And again, it's following this, then we are going to move to Item Six in this agenda, which was to recess and at this time, not, not adjourned. We are recessing and then we will come back pursuant to Item Six to reconvene at 2:30 PM this afternoon for continuation of Elk River Property Irrigation Pipeline de novo appeal. So we are in recess until 2:30 this afternoon. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, we're back from a recess earlier this morning. This is a continuation of the meeting this morning, of the special meeting Wednesday, February 14th, 2018. This specific agenda item is one agenda item. I'm just gonna read a short paragraph into the record regarding this, the agenda item from the memo from Carolyn Johnson on this topic. It's a continuation of board action on de novo appeal from a planning commission decision on Elk River Property Development's application for the analysis of alternative routes for a pipeline and ancillary facilities to deliver recycled wastewater located for irrigation of a golf course on or over assessor, assessor map 32-15-29C. Lot numbers 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 118, 120, and 121, and extend to the property commonly known as the Nap Ranch, which is sections 19, 29, and 30 of township range 32S, 15W, tax lot 4,400, and section 29C of township 32S, range 15 west, tax lot 500. And one other comment here, that this, the public hearing on this topic has been closed, so the board cannot hear from any party. It may ask questions this afternoon of staff. So there is no public comment and there will be no questions asked of either the applicant or any opponents of the particular project. So with that, I'm gonna open to Carolyn Johnson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Carolyn Johnson, Community Development Director. Thank you, Commissioner Huxley, for getting us started here. The testimony that you heard last time is being supplemented by the staff report that you received late last week. And that included quite a bit of correspondence. There was- There was written testimony that we included from prior planning commission packets. There was also some support letters from Wildland Properties, and there was also a January 18th letter from ORCA to the board. Those were posted to the website and considered received between January 17th and 5:00 PM on February 7th. You had left the record open for that amount of time, for people to submit written testimony. After February 7th, there was a letter received from James Haley representing the applicant and also a rebuttal to the January 31st letter from Sean Malone representing Oregon Coast Alliance. That rebuttal came from Bill Close on February 12th. Since February, well, actually, no, the rebuttal came with the findings on the 12th. That is something that was just added to the, the website yesterday. So, I'm here really to just answer any questions that you might have. I think the staff report tries to go through the points of the ORCA letter and responses by the applicant, but we really don't, I really don't have anything more to say. You've, you've looked through all of this, and you've had a lot of material. There's no order in front of you today, so you will need to talk about taking, when you've taken action, when you want that to happen. We have until the 28th of February pursuant to the authorization we've gotten from the applicant to extend the timeframe to take that action. So, with that, I'll just leave it open. Any questions? And I'm sure Council Huddle might have some comments as well.
Why don't we go to Council Huddle next before we have any Commissioner comments? County Council, you have any further comments on, on that explanation?
Well, no, other than the, really, the two principal documents would be the correspondence from ORCA and some other comments that talk about, you know, the standards, the statutes. And then, they're, I think, well summarized in the findings that were provided to each Commissioner individually and then posted on the website that were submitted by the applicant in their final closing written materials. And I think the final closing written materials do a good job of summarizing what the issues are, both what the arguments, you know, against approval and the arguments for approval. And if you ask me for a recommendation, I'll give you one, but until such time, I'll just, you know, just wait and be available to answer questions.
Okay, Commissioner Boyce, we'll begin with you.
Just the, the findings are seven pages here and easy to follow, very well done. I think responsibly challenges the, the issues that they've had to face on this project. And to see the DEQ put it basically that it's our responsibility, and I interpret that as their support. This, just highlighting, this was very good information. The findings were just very helpful. That's all I have for now.
You said seven, the seven pages?
Isn't that what counted? What'd you count? Maybe it's one...
I counted thirteen.
You have double-sided there, Commissioner.
Oh, well.
Okay, okay, they're thirteen.
Being double-sided prints. So, you have...
You should have spent more time in the library, you know.
I went into something several months back where they did not copy the back page.
I appreciate being corrected on that, which even further amplifies my point.
Commissioner Gold, do you have any comments?
Well, in going through all this, I think it comes down to a couple of things. We're asked to approve the continuation of the permit that happened, and the argument against it was that nothing had been done. And I talked to Carolyn Johnson, and she said that what they did would not constitute them having to renew the, the original permit. And also, I think it comes down to they did submit, the applicant did submit the, the options for the pipelines to use the water from the sewer treatment. And I also think that it would be a win-win proposition because putting the wastewater into the ocean, as far as I'm concerned, it would be a better use to, to use it for the golf course, and the city would win also. So, those are my comments.
I think mine, again, I think it was detailed on the findings. There were, there was certainly the, did the permit expire or did it not, did the permit not expire? The applicants presented information to the effect that, in their opinion, for the reasons that they showed here, the permit did not expire. They had submitted, went so far as to submit invoices for equipment and earth removal, et cetera, et cetera. I think they equated to rental, because it was their equipment. They had, you know, equated it to so many, so many thousands of dollars in rental. The other one was, I think, a, a large one was the alternative routes or routes of the effluent or the, the pipeline carrying the effluent. And they, I believe, addressed each and every alternative to show that, why the alternative was not the preferred way. And I think the one going down, there was much discussion or much communication correspondence on the one going down Highway 101, where it was not the preferred because of traffic and so forth. And I think that they provided the minimum required documentation to meet the DEQ requirements, or the requirements of statutes that they had proven or showed demonstrated that the alternatives would not be the preferred one, and the one that was recommended is the, the right one to use. I think that there was another discussion or point of, of some contention as far as did the county's approval, did DEQ have to approve before the county on certain things? And I think, again, they went through to the point where they had correspondence, referred back to correspondence from their Department of Environmental Quality, saying that they provided, they, their preference was, or their requirement was, they were not going to make a final decision until the county ruled on it. So, I think, to me, those were the three main points of objection or that the ORCA, I believe, ORCA had argued. So, I think that those are the three things that, that this board needs to ultimately make a decision on. Did the applicant provide convincing evidence to, to one opinion versus the opponent position? So, those are my, those are my comments.
Are you satisfied with that?
Well, I, I'm going to, if I may, I'll come back to that. I think my question would be to staff, either Carolyn or County Council, do those three points pretty much summarize the, the direction or the, that this, that this board needs to move as far as an order in regards to our, our decision regarding those three points?
Yes.
County Council?
Right. I think...
Any comments or suggestions past that?
Well, I think, I think the suggestion would be to make a motion then. It, it sounds like, from what I've heard from the board, you're inconcurrent over that the issues are. There's at least a preliminary indication that the applicant has met its burden of proof on the issues. And in that case, it would be appropriate to make an order to bring back to the board at the next regular meeting, an order approving, you know, approving the application for effluent treatment on the golf course based on the written findings and conclusions submitted by the applicant. And then, what would happen after that would be, we would bring it back to the board at the next meeting to vote on the final order. And after you make such a motion, you could deliberate further today, and then at the next meeting, you would, it would still have to go through one more vote to make sure the order reflected what the board's decision was.
And that would be no later than February 21st?
That'd be the 21st.
Not the 28th then, which I was thinking.
We could, well, what, if you read the staff report, it says to have something no later than the 21st. I, that's the, that's the maximum limit that the applicant has allowed us. I prefer that we not wait to the very end. That's just my personal preference on doing things, so, and I don't see any reason to go beyond the 21st since the board has. The record's closed, there's no more information that can come in. You've, you've heard and seen everything, so I, I think bringing something back next week would make a lot of sense.
Okay.
Don't ask me to repeat his motion, but so moved, Mr. Chair. Interim Chair.
I would say that.
Um, any discussion?
None here.
Commissioner Gold?
Well, I would just say one other thing that I read in the complaint for, from ORCA was that they were saying that wetlands were being disturbed, and I don't think that was the case because they were getting rid of course, which is not part of wetlands.
You're here.
So, are you suggesting that we add that?
I think, I think that's on page...
The fourth point?
I think that's on page 12 or 13. It's finding number six, I think, in the applicant's findings. I think she's just repeating that those are in there, so...
Correct.
The, the suggestion I had, and I think the motion by Commissioner Boyce then, would be that you adopt, that your final order to approve the application to land apply treated water to the golf course, and that the golf course has done the necessary work within a year of approval to, to be, you know, deemed good, that all that is contained in the findings, including what Commissioner Gold just said.
So, it's based on...
That if you just, right. And so, that was my motion, was to bring back a final order to approve the application and the other part of it with the, the golf course is, is a going concern, the permit's okay, it's still valid, what have you, based on the findings in, in the applicant's submitted. And again, I think Commissioner Gold just added that in case, in case she was being very particular. When you asked if, if those three issues were the primary issues, I think they were, but I think Commissioner Gold identified just a sub-context of, of that one issue on there.
Right, that was one of the complaints that was issued from, from ORCA, and I just thought we should at least make it nice that.
If I could, there's a couple of conditions also that you're going to want to add to this. One came from ODOT, that if there's any state permits required from them, we'd have to get, they would have to get those, and...
I think the other was to comply with all county road permits.
Comply with all county rules, right. So, if they need encroachment permits or things like that. So, those are fairly basic conditions that we would want to see added.
So, to both Commissioners Boyce and Gold, are we, are we okay just saying, you know, in, in the language to include those two items that were just also addressed by Carolyn Johnson?
I'm fine with that.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, with the addition of the, the worrying final order.
Correct.
As you just said. Thank you.
Sure. For review again at that time to make sure that interpretations and so forth were correct. Do we have any, any other comments?
None here.
Commissioner Gold?
No.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I saw, I saw he was looking up, I'm not, we could, we could debate.
Oh, okay, okay.
The drama.
Okay, then, then the, we will have the proper notices go out and put on the agenda for...
Next week.
Next week, those are what we had talked about. And that, that today, being today, is that, is that okay?
Yes, yes, it is.
Is that on the agenda with a agenda routing slip?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think it is 2:47, is that correct? This meeting is adjourned?
Thank you all for taking the time to come.
Thank you.
I, I saw that. Yes. Thank you, thank you. It was a good, it was a good, oh, thank you, it was a good, good, good case.